Afternoon, Leila.
Good afternoon.
Must be waiting for Linda.
Good afternoon.
Here she comes.
Okay. Right on time as usual.
Are you talking about me?
Yes. Because you show up, I mean, I, you must have an atomic clock in your brain because right at the top of the hour, boom, there you are always. Right on the nickel. So three o'clock and everybody's here. So we'll go workshop to order. And we got several items we're going to discuss here this afternoon in advance of our city council meeting, which I think everybody knows by now tonight will be the first time we're going to start at six instead of seven. So. I get this, this meeting is being recorded. Okay, I got it. All right, great. So the first item on the agenda is that we wanted to discuss here this afternoon, the workshop is the short term rental licensing and inspection fee schedule. And Leila, I'm going to turn that over to you to kind of explain to us what we're doing here.
Great. And I'm going to let you know ironically, I'm at City Hall, but I'm having a bit of an internet glitch here and there. So I'm just giving you a heads up. If you have any issues, just let me know. I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. And Judy Wilson is also here. And as everyone knows, Judy is our license and ordinance specialist. And Judy is the person that really runs this program. So with today is we're bringing up proposal, we're actually like counsel tonight, going to be asking you to approve a resolution to both increase some short term rental licensing fees and also add some new fees. And the purpose of this action is for cost recovery for licensing and inspection. And I did want to point out, just to clarify, that the annual short term rental renewal fee, which is the one that's associated with Tillamook County's new sort of operator fee, I think is what folks refer to. And we are not proposing any changes to that fee at this time. So that's the annual renewal fee that folks that are in the program have to pay. And we expect that that will be subject to a future council discussion. So I just wanted to make that clear upfront. So the reasons that we're proposing these fee increases is is both because the ordinance actually requires that we get cost recovery back for staff time to process the applications and do the various inspections. And those fees have not been increased since 2010. And the short term rental application fee has been $75 since then, and that also included the initial inspection. So staff actually spent a bit of time between the building official who conducts many of all of our inspections. And Judy spent some time kind of going through each of these activities that we do and calculated sort of an average amount of time spent for each of these. So what we're seeing is that to process an application, so this is the initial application, it actually takes about enough staff time that gets us to $250. So that's based on staff hourly rates and the time that it takes to process that application and then coordinate and perform that inspection. And again, we currently only charge $75. And the current inspection fees, again, so the fee for the ordinance required periodic re inspections, which are now every three years and previously they were every five is has also been $75 since 2010. We also do a number of follow up inspections at times if there deficiencies are noted in the initial inspection. We don't have a fee for those follow up inspections. So that also came to our attention as we analyze this. And then there are times we have to kind of do random inspections. So if they're kind of one offs or issues that come up to conform, we may have to go out and do those kinds of follow up inspections. So we also don't have any fees to cover those costs. And we do quite a few of those. So again, staff really went through and, you know, calculated the time that it took and believe that the periodic re inspections should be $150. Follow up inspections to confirm the correction of something that was an identified deficiency is $75. And then the average cost of kind of a random one off inspection, we're proposing $150. So that in short is what we're asking. And just to kind of summarize, we're asking to increase the short term rental license application inspection fee from $75 to 250. We're asking for an increase of the periodic re inspection fee from $75 to 150. And then we're asking to add new fees, $75 for a follow up inspection and $150 for any other random inspection. So that's what we'll be asking council to approve tonight. And with that, I will stop sharing and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions.
Judy is here as well.
Any questions for Leila on this?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Just so we get it out on the table. So Leila, I I noted that you had a $250 annual fee, but at which includes an inspection, but the inspection actually only occurs once every three years. So how are we correlating that relative to there wouldn't be an inspection? All there would be basically was the receipt of a paperwork. And and a follow up question to that would be maybe for Judy is how does the new software that we introduced affect the efficiency of being able to process that application? Have we shortened that window? Then I had one more question after that.
So the 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 fee that we're requesting, that we think that for cost recovery and to satisfy the ordinance is just the application for a new property that has applied to get a short term rental license. And there currently is a $75 reimbursement for the inspection, but no reimbursement for staff time. And my staff time, I without taking into consideration how much time I spend on the waving list updates, I would, it probably an average of two hours of staff time for me. And then the initial inspection is about an hour and a half for the building official. And so that's where we got that cost of 250. And then that doesn't affect the annual license fee, which is currently 250, but 100, which is enough to cover the annual license fee renewal without an inspection process of doing that. But 150 of that goes into a different fund and doesn't go into the general fund to cover cost time involved in staff or renewing a license. But we're not recommending any change to that because there's another discussion that could be coming up related to existing short term rentals. That's my understanding. And now I can't remember the rest of your questions, Steve.
Oh, the other, hi Judy, the other, I guess the other comment or question I had was whether the change in
Oh, the software.
Yeah.
The software has been, they did a really good job of selling their product. The product itself itself is very un-user friendly and has been not not very helpful. It's just very difficult to use. And I'm actually hoping that we don't renew it this next year and look for something different.
Okay, that was an annual service fee, basically system where you pay annually for support, what have you.
And if we decide to not continue, and they have recently sold, which has created a lot of telephone calls from owners who are really having a difficult time using it for this round of transit lodging taxes. And it's so if we don't renew that, we need to give them notice, I think by the beginning of December. So that's a discussion that's kind of in the works. But yeah, I
So do I understand then from what I'm hearing from both of you that the 250 you're suggesting is for new licensure only.
Correct.
That the re annual relicence, if you will, is not changing at all.
Correct.
And the other question that I had was if you do a annual three year inspection, are you suggesting if if things don't meet the code requirements right off the bat? In other words, they go out, they identify a couple of issues that need to be resolved, which historically it seems like we're doing more than 50% of the cases, having to go back for something else. Is that when we would charge the $75? Or does the initial, does the initial re inspection come with a follow up inspection to confirm abatement of whatever the issues are?
Well, the ordinance amendments that we just recently made say that if there is if something on the city published inspection list doesn't pass, because they're now required to be ready for their inspection. If something doesn't pass that's on that list that they go through and confirm that all these things are ready when they schedule their inspection, and there will be a an inspection fee for the follow up.
So
If it's something discovered that's not on the list, then we would not charge an additional fee.
Okay, so the annual or the every three year inspection could result in an initial inspection and a re inspection, which would total, and I've forgotten now, is that $225 total? Something like that. Okay. All right. I thank you. That helps. Now I understand it better.
Other questions from anybody on what we're trying to accomplish here?
So Mayor, I've got a question. I understand the the primary purpose here was to quantify staff costs and recover them. I'm just curious. So did you look at any other jurisdictions to compare what we're doing here with what's going on nearby?
No, we just used our costs. I don't, our costs wouldn't necessarily be the same as in other jurisdictions' costs.
I do know just for, and I don't know how they came up with this fee, but Cannon Beach, I believe, is $500 is their initial short term rental fee, which is twice what we're proposing.
Yeah, I don't think that our fees are necessarily unreasonable in today's world. They seem unreasonable to all of us because it hits you in the face. But in reality, it's kind of the nature of the beast right now everywhere. And you're just trying to do a hundred percent cost recovery. And that's what it cost us to do this kind of service. So.
I just think kudos go to Judy for sticking with us as long as she has the ups and downs of what we've experienced. And I'm just delighted that we've taken the time to actually calculate what it takes and then cover those costs. That's really important to the city. And it's something I think we all believe in.
Any other questions on this? Any comments or questions from the public?
I have no hands raised.
Okay, so this this will be, this will be on our
I do have, looks like Patrick.
All righty.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for doing this. And just as a an advocate for homeowners out there who also rent our house, I think that it's great that we're going up to 250 for new folks. I would say, I would just hope that maybe we think about this idea of combining two visits and charging twice for somebody to check back. I know that we just had, we had our review a few months back. And we set up the garbage as best we could. That was basically all we had to do. He said, well, could you just redo the chain on it? We did that. He said, I'll come back later and check on it. To have something like that be charged a second time seems a little extraordinary. And, you know, for cost, you know, I would just say, I would say that this process does pay for itself with respect, maybe not to fees, but to the percentage that we're paying every year in the in the taxes. So I just hope that maybe in the follow up for all the folks who are given so much demands and need, and maybe we can have some give and take on how much those those inspections cost.
Thank you, Patrick. Anybody else out there with a comment?
No other comments.
Okay. I don't know that we need to dwell on this a lot longer. This will be on the agenda tonight and will be asked to make a decision and pass those various resolutions at that time. So do we cover all we need to cover on that, Leila, do you think?
Yeah, you did. Thank you.
Okay, well, let's move on to the next item on the agenda is discussion of the visitor center. And I'll I'll lead the office discussion. When Dan Hague submitted his resignation, I was the one that asked Leila, I think we should put this on our workshop to have a discussion is how we run the visitor center. And when Dan told me he'd been with us for eight years, I about fell off my chair. I thought he'd been there about two or three. And this is the time to, I mean, is are we, the way we have the visitor sent up, the way we had him as an independent contractor, is that the proper way to run the visitor's center? I mean, if we're ever going to make a change or do something different, now would be the time to to have a discussion. Dan, obviously, over the years, got very engaged with the business community and did a lot to help the community and the business community. And he was not a city employee. As I say, he was a contractor for us. It seemed to work pretty well. I remember when when we started, and you can refresh my memory, Linda, but I, we had hoped that the Business Alliance would run the visitor's center. That just didn't work out. And so we ended up getting Dan as an independent contractor. So I I don't have any any great ideas on how we should change stuff. Maybe we don't have to change anything. And maybe we should just go out and replace the position, define the job and replace the position as similar to the way it's been running with Dan. Or I just wonder if anybody has any other ideas. So let me just throw it out there.
I'll chime in, Mike. I I think we're really going to be hard pressed to replace Dan. I would support trying. I don't think we need to be desperate about it. And if we don't find something that we feel will be an ideal fit like we had with Dan, somebody who's as involved in the community and community affairs as they are in business affairs. I I think that we had a great arrangement and I I would support trying to replace it. Whether or not you can ever get the business community to focus as a unit on on doing something with the center. You know, I'm a bit skeptical. I've been part of the chamber. I was part of the man said, the Business Alliance. I've been a part of three or four different iterations of the Business Alliance here over the last 20 years. And you know, they're self-employed people with a lot of demands and a lot of distraction and and trying to get by. And right now, many of these business people are really, you know, hard pressed to do much more than than keep it going. So to get a lot of unity from them to organize and run the center on their own, I think especially right now is a big ask.
Yeah, and COVID, the last year and a half plus that has changed things. Dan had had a group of volunteers, of citizens from the community that manned the visitor's center for a lot of the time. And when we went lockdown with COVID, I would say last year and a half, the visitor's center has probably been closed more than it's been open. And the visitors all faded away because of COVID. So when it's open, Dan runs everything and he doesn't have a volunteer group anymore. So there's some rebuilding that's going to have to be done with all that as we come out of COVID. Anyway. Any other?
Just a couple of comments. Yeah, just a couple of comments. I don't know whether you guys, some of you may not remember back when we started the visitor's center. But the relationship with the business community was strained at best. Hans is just spot on. We worked really hard to try to support a business alliance, which was going to become a Chamber of Commerce, which just never worked for the for the exact reasons that Hans identified. These are, these are small business owners who work from seven in the morning into seven at night or later. And it's, you know, it's just, it's really hard work. The other thing that, as I was going back over my notes, in terms of the history of the of the visitor's center, I was remembering there was a point where we didn't know which, if the, if a restaurant was open or if it was going to close, what businesses were open, what their hours were. We tried to, the city tried to get that organized and we could just never get it. So so a tourist would come in and want to know where to go for dinner. And we couldn't tell them because we, at that point, some of the restaurants just closed. I mean, they just, there was not that kind of regularity that there is today. And we in hiring Dan Hague, it was a gift to the community. Because what he did from day one is he reached out to the business community and formed very strong relationships, a support, give and take relationship. It's been the, our relationship with the business community is better than it has ever been. We know exactly who's open. We know who's closed. This was critical during the COVID issue when when the businesses were strained. And it's just, I mean, we take it for granted today, but it it was brought to us by Dan Hague and the the incredible work that he did for us in in getting us started. So I guess I I think there are lots of opportunities that we could look at, but but I would support making sure that whatever we do keeps our connection with the business community, because that's all part of tourism and supporting the tourism industry, which is which we have to do. The bathrooms at the beach were a critical component of that as well. And maybe potentially partnering with some other not for profits that are in the area that might want to partner with us. So I mean, I think there's some opportunities here. But a lot of what has happened with the visitor's center, 98% of the credit goes to Dan Hague. So finding somebody that can do that as well is going to be a critical component.
Mayor, I had a couple of quick comments. I agree with everything that both Hans and Linda have suggested. And I also thank Dan for all of his work. I also thank Dan for making the decision to move forward with his life at the beginning of the shoulder season and not in June, you know, because that would have put us in a really much more difficult position. Having said all of that, for me, you know, we're, these are, these are city monies that basically run a visitor's center. And so far, the discussion has been aimed a lot at how that relates to the business community. And I understand that visitor centers have a direct parallel to how the business community operates and encouraging and supporting those activities. But I also think that we may be missing the boat here a little bit in that there might be other things that a visitor's center could be doing for the community in general, whether that's organizing events, whether that's spearheading, you know, activities. I would like to see the use of the city monies to be more than just to support a business community, that we use those monies in a much broader perspective, which for me means that we spend maybe the next few months doing some research on how other people may be approaching these things, or how some of, Linda mentioned, our nonprofits could benefit from the use of the visitor's center or activities of the visitor's center. I just think there's, I just would hate to see us miss some opportunities here. And before we move forward with with whatever we do, that we look at the potential of a new approach. And that's not to take away from what Dan did, because it was spectacular. And I think there's still a lot of work that Dan, you know, we can build on what Dan has done with the with our business community. I just would like to see us have a bigger, broader perspective and include maybe the community beyond just the business sector. So.
I'd like to interject a little bit, Steve. You you mentioned city monies. And I wanted to clarify that the visitor's center is paid for with room taxes. And there is a certain, the state has certain expectations about how we're going to use those monies to support tourism. And Dan did a great job of of meeting, I think, the letter of that law, but expanding the, you know, the effective intent by doing some of these other activities and and networking and including the community in other ways. So I agree with you about doing that. But we need to be a little bit careful about the semantics. Because we, there is a, there is a control mechanism over how we spend those monies. And they are monies that are collected from room taxes.
You're absolutely, I, yes, you're absolutely correct. I guess a better phrase is that we funnel the money in terms of the the use of the visitor's center. But I, but I think there is, as you just suggested, there are maybe some broader places that we could go with those monies and still be in compliance with the TLT requirements. You know, we're in kind of this awkward position. And it's kind of the elephant in the room, isn't it? But I'm never the, I'm never afraid to talk about the elephant. And the elephant is in some respects that, you know, we talk about the fact, oh, we're overwhelmed with tourists, you know, we're too successful in encouraging tourists to come here. And so you know, they're, they're, I just think we should look at all potentials out there as we move forward, whatever the new plan is going to be.
Well, and that's a great point. I didn't want to muddy the waters too much, but I'm hoping that as this evolves organically, maybe part of this discussion will be my own committee that has been hibernating ever since COVID, which is the Off Season Tourism Promotion Committee. I think there are a lot of questions we can ask ourselves as a city about whether or not we need to continue promoting tourism, even in the offseason. The last couple of off seasons have been pretty strong here. And so I agree, we we may have enough tourism, so to speak. And there are other things that those funds can be used for in terms of infrastructure, as long as it's there to serve tourists. So I I'm ready to to put that committee up there as something that could be part of this discussion about what does this committee do? Does it even exist post COVID? That kind of stuff.
I think that would be a great start, Hans. I think that's a really, really, that was a really good committee. And it's certainly experienced in what you can and cannot use that money for is, it's pretty narrow. We've tried to expand it as much as we can. And I think Dan's done a good job of that. But there's just a point at which the rules are the rules and they they really, they really hold you to it. And certainly your group understands that.
Well, yes, this movie's, the money is supposed to be specifically used for tourist promotion function. And you remember at the beginning of COVID, we, we gave a small amount of money to every business in town out of Hans's fund, and we just canceled those grants. And we got our hands slapped for doing that. They let us do it, but they said, don't ever do it again. And you got to be careful what you're doing with that. Jerry, you got any words of wisdom on this topic?
Actually, actually, I, I want to jump in on this part of the conversation because I I I went back and looked at the statute that as it defines tourism promotion. And honestly, I think if in fact, everything that Dan has been able to do over the years is considered permissible under the statute, then he has done a very creative job of expanding the definition. I don't mean that in a pejorative way. I mean, I think Dan did a great job, was a, an asset to the community. Obviously, that's reflected in the way the community feels about him. But when I read that email that Nan Devlin sent to sort of point out all of the great things that Dan has done, as you read down that list, I think you could make an argument that more than half of the entries on the list don't meet the definition of tourism promotion. So I'm I think you could make an argument that more than half of the entries on the list don't meet the definition of tourism promotion. So I, I'm, I'm not looking to lessen the value of the visitor center to us. I, I would just like to have a clear understanding of, are we complying with the, with the statute? For example, the very first thing in, in Nan's email is that it's the go-to center for updated information for locals. It is the go-to center for updated information for locals. And that's not tourism promotion. And you go down her list and a lot of things just do not hit the mark. And I, the reason I am curious about this is because when, when we were talking several months ago about the trail plan and whether we could use tourism promotion dollars to in any way advance the, the development of the, the trail plan, the dividing line for James, our attorney seemed to be, you could, you could develop materials that promoted the trail system, but you can't use money to build trails. So that got me thinking a little bit more about all of the things that, that we are able to do out of the visitor center or perhaps some of the things that we aren't really able to with the TLT money. And so I, I just think it's a, you're right, Mayor. This is a good opportunity to rethink the approach entirely. There may be ways to enhance what Dan has been able to lay down as a good foundation and stay within the statutory definition. Or there may be ways to involve more volunteers or the business community in ways that augment what Dan has put in place. But, but I do think that, let me just quickly say it out loud, because the tourism promotion is, is defined as advertising, publicizing, or distributing information for the purpose of attracting and welcoming tourists. There are a couple, a couple of other definitions as well, but that first one is clearly the one that addresses what we think Dan's activities all fit under. And I, I, I think you can certainly make a creative argument that everything he does fits under that, but I think you could equally make a more restrictive argument that a good number of his activities are beyond that. And I, I just want us to get it clear before we, before, whatever way we go moving forward, I think this is a good time for a gut check on, on how those monies are supposed to be spent and, and and how we can best utilize the, the visitor center going forward.
I see Dan, Nan Devlin has her hand raised and I, I wanna recognize her. But first of all, just a quick comment, Jerry. We've always worked on the edges with this, this stupid thirty or seventy, thirty split with the revenue that you gotta use for tourist promotion has been a burn everybody's saddle for years. And everybody tries to work around it as best they can and work around the edges. And I'm sure everybody goes over the boundaries once in a while. But anyway, Dan, Nan, can we recognize her?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, please help us with this.
Actually, the seventy, thirty, the seventy percent can be used for tourism facilities and a trail is considered a tourism facility. And I've checked that with Orla and Travel Oregon and our own legal. Just like it was probably used to help build the tourism, the visitor center, but you can also use it for other facilities that serve tourists, but it also serve locals. And you do that. And I did wanna say that the, the, in my email about the go-to center of updated information for locals, that was, I should have annotated that a bit to say during COVID, Dan started an information Facebook page that was all about where to get grants, where to get COVID relief supplies, all the, all the business Oregon, unemployment, every, all the information that you needed as a business to know during COVID. He supplied that. So, and it was, it became the go-to source for the whole county. Cause a lot of information was not coming out of our SBDC or EDC. And so Dan's, Dan's Facebook page became a huge source for the community.
Well, Nan, you work in the county and the tourism department, obviously. Do you have any suggestions for us on? We wanna, I, I think we all wanna keep the visitors' center open. Do you think the, the platform that we've ran with Dan is a good one and we should continue with that? Or do you have any suggestions on how we should change it or improve it?
Well, and, and I, I heard someone say, talk about how you could use it for, you know, use the person that replaces Dan as putting on events, which is just, I think, a great idea. That could be added, of course. And I know that Dan supported all the events that were, you know, it, with his time and his effort in the, in the, the city. But I have to say that I have, I've really, and I'm, I'm partial to Danny's my next door neighbor.
Well, he's on this call and he's got his hands raised.
And I, you know, I just never have seen a better-run visitor center than what you have. And Pacific City is looking to model, they're, they wanna do one and they're looking to model it after Manzanitas. So what you've, what you've been doing has been great.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for Nan while we have her on the forefront here? Let's recognize Dan's got his hand raised.
Hey, everybody. You know, whatever you guys decide to do moving forward, I just wanted to say that, you know, any support I could lend, I know it was kind of, you know, in all honesty, I made a lot of, of it up as I went along, especially in the last eighteen months. I just put my efforts where I felt you did the most help. So, you know, there's no real template, but if there's any, you know, I do have a lot of forums, I do have a lot of contact info and a lot of institutional knowledge, obviously. So, you know, if there's any way I can help support your decision, whatever it may be, you know, please don't hesitate to call me because I'm, I'm still here.
Well, we thank you for that. Leila, do you wanna jump into this conversation? You and I talked about this a little bit this morning and where do you think we should go with this thing?
Yeah, I wonder, would it be helpful for folks to see what the current responsibilities are that Dan was contracted to do to kinda understand like his scope of work?
Sure.
I could share that. I think the thing I would add, I was happy to hear folks bring up events. Because right now, you know, it's my office that manages event requests. And I think aside from perhaps like EDC and B types of, there's not really tourist types of events, those are trainings. I would put my hat in the ring to say, you know, it'd be great to have whomever ends up taking this position, do some of the coordinating around the public events that happen, because those really do attract tourism and they actually require quite a bit of staff time. So the one, for example, you'll be talking about tonight, it's a filming of a movie. But that probably, that took several hours of staff time to just coordinate with the people who were asking for it, getting the information, getting, you know, lots and lots of back and forth that happens. And in thinking about and looking at the scope of work that Dan had, it seems like that could be a place that perhaps those types of events could be prepared and then still brought to council as normal, but that the preparation would happen with that person. So that would, that would actually take some, some weight off of our office. And I think would put it in actually the more appropriate place, because if you have someone who's managing like all the events for a city, they would have a better sense of activities and when it might be a good time and places they might be able to have events. And it would just be really nice to have someone who could do that, because I get requests all the time for things like weddings and other stuff. And while it's very sweet, it does take quite a bit of time for staff to have to respond to someone who wants to get a permit for their wedding. Because again, I think that's promoting tourism. If you're trying to get people to come here for a destination event, whether or not, you know, your administrative staff is, you know, we're handling it right now. But I would say that since I've been here, I, I've had to deal with at least ten permits in the last three months. Not all of them have made it to city council, but it's quite a bit. And I think that that would be, I, I would, I would vote to have that be an added task for whomever takes on that job.
Mayor, can I make a comment? And Leila suggested she could share with this Dan's duties. But rather than do that at this work session, I heard two people volunteer. And my ears always perk up when people volunteer, but I heard Hans volunteer his committee and I heard Dan volunteer as well. And I'm wondering if we put the two of them together and ask that group to go out and provide us an assessment of what's been going on. And based upon Leila's comments about maybe some needs that we haven't utilized in the past, and come back to us in a month or two with a report that's maybe a little broader than just trying to make a decision here today or, I, I just would like to see some thought go into this by the people who really know what's going on. And it seems like Hans's committee and, and Dan specifically could come back with a really nice, you know, somewhat brief report to help guide us in our decision process. I love Leila's ideas. I love Hans's ideas. I love Dan's ideas. I just think there's some opportunities here to, as I mentioned, broaden the perspective about what we might be able to accomplish.
I would be happy to dust this committee off. Everybody's still around, I think. But yeah, we haven't met as a group for probably two years. So I, I'm, I'm up for that.
And my, remind us, who's, who's on the committee with you, Hans?
I don't remember. Tom Mock, Tom Mock, Chung. Dan was a non-voting member. City manager is a non-voting member. And we had a,
Matt Rona, I think, too.
What's that, Dan?
Matt Rona from Four Paws, I think.
Right. And he took over for another commercial owner. And I'm trying to remember the other resident member that was also a newer appointee, maybe only came to one meeting. It's been a couple of years.
Yeah. Well, you guys, you guys used to meet twice a year, I remember.
Twice a year, specifically to evaluate applications for grant monies for events that would happen in the off-season. And I just don't know, I, I think that our, our whole economy is changing. And the focus of that committee, if it, if it remains, I think is probably gonna need to be tweaked if not changed entirely.
Well, if you're willing to get that group together and and maybe change what you're doing there, maybe we don't need that group anymore, even in the, I just say, even in the off-season. I mean, the tourists are finding us. We don't need to, to do anything extraordinary to get more of them down here, that's for sure.
Well, I'm happy to maybe just do one meeting and, and as Steve suggested, I'd love to have Dan be part of that. You know, and just do one meeting to kind of brainstorm, see how everybody feels. There are two business members on there, get some input from them. And there are a couple of resident members and, you know, just maybe give you kind of a summary of how the committee feels after these last two years.
Yep, I'd be happy to join in with that.
I see Tom Campbell has his hand raised. Is he one of the citizens that we forgot? Tom, do you have a comment?
I do. Can y'all hear me?
Nice picture, by the way.
Well, I, I'm really glad that you all are talking about rethinking that role. Because, you know, it's hard to ignore Mr. Mastin's most recent screed and his poll. And maybe rethinking about the necessity of having tourism promotion in the city is a good thing. It is kind of redundant of what Visit Tullamook Coast is doing. So there's that side of it, too. And yeah, I'll just let you know that yesterday, we had the board meeting for the Historical Society and everybody was a Twitter about what's gonna happen with that building. I think it's too small for us to wanna occupy it. But we would love to assist in decorating it.
Okay.
Just food for thought.
Yeah, thanks for your offer.
You bet.
If I could just, I think maybe if we're gonna rethink, coming off of what Tom just said, I think he makes a good point. And you yourself have made a good point about the the need for us to perhaps not do much active, aggressive tourism promotion. I just wonder if maybe as Hans reactivates the committee, we should maybe ensure that, that the resident voice is is, is pretty, pretty well-heard in that group. I, I, I know you're saying Hans or a couple of resident members. But I don't think we want a committee looking at the visitor center that feels too much like the business community. Because that's, that's been sort of, I think, a little bit of the rub that, you know, if, if the visitor center to some extent operates as a local chamber of commerce for the local business community, that's a good thing. It's a healthy thing. It's a positive thing. But is it something that the city should be paying for? And even if you don't wanna think of these dollars as city dollars, is it something that a tourism promotion fund should be paying for? I just think it'd be healthy to have pretty, pretty robust citizen input on that committee. And so I, I'm not sure. Did you name a couple of people that are the citizen reps on that committee?
Well, the committee itself is made of five voting members. Two are residents, two are business owners, and there's myself. And I don't believe I've ever had to vote to break a tie or anything, so I just chair. And I believe it has been a pretty balanced approach, very focused on off-season, which of course was different pre-COVID than it is now. And they are open to the public, as all city committee meetings are. And we've had plenty of, of input. You know, making sure that these events are, you know, kind of getting the bang for the buck in the sense that they are events that are community-centered and that the community appreciates. Tourism, one of those definitions that you've mentioned earlier about tourism is people coming from more than fifty miles away. Well, we've kind of considered that to mean that completely includes most of the second homeowners here that technically are coming here from fifty miles away. And a lot of the events that we've given grant monies to promote have, have been as focused about getting second homeowners to spend more time in Manzanita.
You wanna be careful. You don't wanna refer to second homeowners as tourists.
I'm, I'm not. I'm just telling you that it's part of what we can do with those monies is encourage second homeowners to come here. Because to the extent that they live more than fifty miles away from here, they, they are tourists under that definition of the law. And we can appeal to them. And we can try to have events that compel them to come back and spend time at their second homes.
Can you give us briefly, Hans, an example of a couple of grants that we did before we?
A lot of them have been like music festivals, music events. Hoffman Center has done some writer's series that have been very successful. You know, there's, there's the need to kind of show afterwards to kind of do a breakdown of where folks came from. So the, the, what's the facility in Haylen Bay Recreational District, they've done a great job of, of showing the demographics of who came for, for certain events. And we've been reluctant to do anything that really was more about paying people to, to do a job per se than it was about actively promoting something that we felt was, you know, seasonal and of interest to the, to the community. And I participated in several of these events and was very impressed with the quality of the events that were, that were put out. But most locally, the, the most frequent beneficiary and most local applicants, probably Hoffman Center.
Tom, you got your hand raised again? You got another question? Or comment?
Yep, you should be able to unmute, Tom.
There we go.
There you go.
There we go. Thank you. Just a couple of things. The reason that NCRD is so effective at accumulating the demographic information of the people that come there is because they use Ticket Tomato. So any of their presentations in the theater, they're getting that information directly from the ticket purchase. And other activities that go on there go on there in conjunction with the community college. So people have to actually apply to be students. And so those are two methods they use to get that demographic information. As far as the committee that has the two citizen representatives, Hans, I think you said Tom Mock was one of them?
Yes.
Yeah, but Tom doesn't live in the city. So I hope going forward that we'll be more careful about making sure that residents are residents.
If there is a forward.
Okay, fair enough. Anyways, that's just my comment. Thank you.
Well, just in summarizing, I think there've been a lot of really good ideas. Jerry's point about being very careful about the money spent and where it goes is critical. Steve's comment about managing or looking at other ways to do it and and figuring and looking creatively at how we could move forward, I think is just spot on. And Hans, his team has worked with that for at least two, maybe three years, maybe more than that. So is as familiar with the legal ramifications and what has happened in the community, the community's response as anyone. So I would strongly support that we ask Hans to bring the team together to come back to us if they choose to do so, to come back to us with some evaluation of maybe others, some things that might be opportunities for us to move forward, potentially partnerships. And then we'll have something specific to talk about right now. I think it's, I think we have the opportunity to make some good changes and this might be a really good way to move forward.
So Leila, it looks like we got a direction and Hans is volunteering. Shall we? Let's just, we're not going to make any decisions today. I just wanted to know the conversation and I think we've had a good one. Can we coordinate that with Hans and you guys get together? I don't know if you can do it and get back to us in the next workshop in a month or certainly not much longer than that because the visitor center is going to be closed at this point. And it is the winter time and we're still dealing with COVID, so it's not a critical thing, but we probably ought to make a decision in a reasonable amount of time what we're going to do.
I think we could have a meeting done with some input and just just a summary of what the committee thinks to give the city at the November council meeting.
Okay. Does that work, Leila?
Yeah, we'll get on that for sure.
It might be a good idea to add Dan to that. I mean, there may be a partnership with the county as well. I'm not sure.
Yeah, he said he'd volunteer to join in on that. So you'll include Dan, right?
Yes. If Dan is willing to join. He's been very helpful and offered a lot of support, so I expect we can entice him to participate.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
And Leila, if you could, since Nan pointed out that Tillamook County Council might have a different opinion than James on the use of the dollars for trails. That would be, to me, that would be a very helpful and significant development. And so I'd ask you to revisit that with James. Because I know there are other things that you've looked at that might be available to be paid for with those dollars. And, you know, anyway, if we have to use the money under that definition, statutory definition, if we can be creative in other ways, as we've been creative at the visitor center, I think we should obviously do that. So it would help a lot to know what James is saying about that trail issue specifically.
For sure. And Nan, I think you and I actually are meeting tomorrow so we can touch base, but it'd be good to get whatever documentation or you know, legal advice you got on that, so we can start with something for our attorney to look at. Always looking to save some money.
Absolutely. And I could show you what Tillamook County has has given for grants and under their tourism facilities grants. And trails are included, bathrooms, performance center seating, a lot of things. I'll bring that with me tomorrow.
Thank you.
Let's move on to our next item, which is a emergency supply update. Has Lee given that presentation or are you doing that?
Well, actually, actually, what we're going to do, let me just give a little background. So it looks like the sun is just wiping me out, but. So at the August city council meeting, there was a discussion about utilization of the emergency preparedness funds in the budget. We had proposed that we use up to 30,000 out of the 50,000 in that fund. And there were some questions about process and procedure. And so we put together essentially an overview of how we were going to go about it. It's a new program, so there's a lot of unknowns in terms of how we're going to move forward, but there is certainly a clear strategy and reporting back to the council process. So we shared that with the council and I'm going to turn it over to Dan to kind of give us an overview and then he will turn it over to Lee Hiltonbrand.
Hello, everybody. So yeah, so the program, you know, as I said, is to get supplies put in place for an event of an emergency. And last meeting, we talked about different ways. So I'm going to kind of start off just reintroducing and talking a little bit about the team that's a part of this. There's some questions that came up. And so Pwatt is going to be ones that are going to be doing some of the vetting and helping assist me with the purchasing stuff. Pwatt is made up of several members. These members include citizens of the community, if there are, some of whom are retired billing officials like Lee. We have some that are retired out of the water district or water drinking programs, things like that. So it's a pretty broad spectrum of people. And the idea as part of the practice of all this is going to be kind of the vetting process. So I'm going to have Lee discuss kind of the first portion of this and then I'm going to take over where I talk about the process of procedure of purchase and how the city is going to be taking care of the supplies. So Lee, if you would so kindly take the first section.
Sure, thanks, Dan. Hi, everyone. So I think that it's important just to share a quick recap of how we got here. There seemed to be some questions after the last workshop of some different aspects of what we did and are doing. So back in September of 2020, I became aware of emergency supply funding that the city was contributing annually. And being the Mass Care Coordinator for the Local Emergency Volunteer Corps, I thought, wow, I wonder if they need any help putting this together. And some subsequent conversations with Public Works Director, we came upon an agreement that it might be a good thing to pursue. So on December, following December last year, we assembled a team of five, as Dan said, that's the Public Works Augmentation Team. And a team of five works in concert with Dan to try and establish some needs. This last March, we developed, the team developed a list of 16 supply categories. And those supplies in our initial our initial attempt, we came up with a budget of $80,000 to take care of 100 people. Well, obviously, that wasn't going to work with the budget that was available. The following May, we pared that down to the five most critical categories and we got it down to 45,000. And finally, this last June, after some real pencil sharpening, we focused more on the immediate needs of survivors after an event and reduced it down to $30,000. And that was what we all agreed was an appropriate amount to work with based on the $50,000 that's currently in the account. We didn't want to run the account dry. And then this past August, we shared those findings and recommendations to the council and the community. And I don't, I didn't sense that the council had any specific disagreement with the supply recommendations. But there was an expectation that we needed to create a process for procurement and exactly how we were going to move forward with this. I want to be clear that these emergency supplies are for Manzanita and they're not for distribution to neighboring communities. Dan will be the Dan Weitzel, not Dan Hag. Dan Weitzel will be the final determination on all the purchases. And the distribution will be controlled via the Manzanita Emergency Operation Plan. So if there's no questions on what I just shared, I'd like to share a process document that that we've worked on to help clarify any questions that may be out there. Any questions? Okay, I'm going to share my screen. And of course, it's always a guess, try to figure out where it is. There it is. Okay, can everybody see that? Can anyone not see it?
Yeah, we see it.
Okay.
I do. I do.
You're a voting member, Mayor. It counts. Yeah. So we, the Pwatt team will work with the Public Works Director in the city and together will research and select and purchase three weeks of mass care supplies. And I want to be clear again, we, the team, are not purchasing the supplies. The city is via Dan currently, the way it's set up. Unless Leila has any other ideas, that seems to be the path that we're moving toward. We will report to the council every quarter on our progress and we hope to have this completed by December 2022. So as you can see, we're looking at a lengthy process. This isn't something that's going to happen overnight. As part of the process, the team will develop a system to store, maintain and rotate inventory. And the emergency supplies will be distributed in accordance with the ICS Command System, Incident Command System, there we go, and the Emergency Manzanita Emergency Operation Addendum. We will work collectively with Manzanita Public Works to establish specific recommended supplies that should be included in the city's preparedness cache. Supplies and products will be considered and vetted based on need, serviceability, durability, weight, storability and ease of deployment. And products meeting the established criteria will be referred to Manzanita Public Works Director for acquisition. And Dan, I think this is your section. You want to go ahead and take this?
Sure.
I'll leave it up for you if that helps.
That works. You can kind of follow along. So as these items, of course, are vetted out by the Pwatt group and it then comes to me for purchase. There are different avenues that we in Public Works use here at the city. We'll search out, you know, items through our state and federal programs that we have. The State Surplus Reuse Program is a great one. We also have Sourcewell. We have different procurement contracts that are already in place with, from other cities that we have as available to us. If there is an expense that's going to be through a private program, say even Amazon is a good example, and it's going to be over $5,000, you know, we will be going out and getting three quotes, you know, to be obtained to purchase equipment. As we move along, items that are procured, of course, then will be secured at the city in our Connex boxes that we have at the treatment plant that are set up for emergency supplies. I don't know how many of you guys from council have seen these Connex boxes. Most people don't even know they exist. They have, they're lighted, they have dehumidifiers in them that keep everything nice and dry and that's where they will be, these items are to be stored until they are, need to be used. Part of the storage will be check sheets and these check sheets are going to be, you know, on there some important information. When was it purchased? How much is on hand? And, you know, does this equipment, food, for example, that might be in there, might have an expiration date that we need to look at and keep an eye on for rotation? That's all going to be kept on check sheets and also kept in a database in the city to be able to earmark that for rotation and things like that. So once the supplies are there, as Lee had said, you know, these are city supplies. If, say, the city supplies are to be transferred out or there is a need in the county for something else, that is going to be at the direct authority of the city manager. Or she says, hey, I want some type of emergency manager or something to make a decision that they'll be used, they can be used. But they are there being secured the whole time. Anything that does come in and comes in and goes out, once again, will be tracked. And so eventually, as we get into this, we get the supplies and things like this where we're purchasing certain things. A section is going to be developed to go into our city emergency operations plan. So that really spells out the more fine details of procurements and things like that as we move along. In this, you'll even see we have a hyperlink to the FEMA. They have a master guide because we really want to do is mimic the way the ICS and FEMA does their stuff. It makes it a lot easier in the event of an emergency. So. And that pretty much wraps up where we are right now with this. There hasn't been so far any, any really, we haven't gone out and really even looked in detail yet on anything. We're still in the very early stages. This is going to be a a process that, as Lee said, it's going to take some time because we want to make sure we're getting the right things. And we want to get things too that we were trying to shoot for that match what other areas are doing and materials that they're getting. Like I said, that way we can get better procurements. So any questions?
I think that wraps up that update.
So Linda, what are we going to discuss tonight? This is listed under Old Business Hour Council meeting tonight. Are we being asked to take some action or what?
No, I think right now it's information only unless the council wants to take further action.
Okay, so we're not being asked to approve or do anything tonight, am I right?
No, this is just.
Okay.
With your information.
Yeah.
No question on that element, Dan? Okay, let's.
I do have one, just one other quick announcement that relates to this. So in, on October 21st, 10:21 at 10:21 is the Great Oregon Shakeout. And for the first time this year, the city of Manzanita, including staff and council members, will be participating in the Great Shakeout. More information will follow, but now I'm really pleased to announce that we'll be part of that and part of exhibiting preparedness for the community. So you'll hear more about that in November.
Okay, let's move on to our last item that we have on the schedule tonight, is your old city hall appraisal. I'm going to turn this one over to Leila.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to make sure that we shared this. We received this while back and I've had a chance to review it and wanted to get it out into the world. And have a short, you know, discussion with the council about starting to consider what a price might look like in terms of the sale of the property. So if you went through and read the appraisal, you see that the value that they associated with it, it assumes vacant land. And because we assumed that the building would be a tear down, given that it's unreinforced masonry and the significant issues associated with mold, et cetera, in the building. And also just the market economics, I can't see a situation in which a renovation of that building would actually be feasible, given today's market. So so I wanted just a chance for the council to discuss this in an open session. And if you have any comments or thoughts regarding the appraisal, at the next meeting, I'd hope to have it at this meeting, but I didn't get the information until just yesterday from our attorney as to how we would proceed with the disposition of the property. We can elect to either hire a broker to do a traditional kind of commercial sale or we can take the approach of doing a sort of a sealed bid process. So the city would still need to hire a broker, but it would be a different type of contract. But the main focus today is, is to, to have some conversation around, around that price and to discuss kind of next steps for, for that property.
Well, I, I read the appraisal a couple of times and the, at first I thought, boy, that's a high price. But then I, I realized it's a ten thousand square foot lot and we have a lot, this is a five thousand square foot lot that's right next door to the winery, which I think is for sale for about a half a million. So eight hundred and fifty probably isn't that much, but I was gonna ask Hans, you're in that business. What, what do you think of that price? Is it too high?
Well, I'll try to be efficient with this because I could talk about La Nina real estate for the next three hours and not get tired of it. It's, it's a very relative thing. A lot of it has to do with proximity to the beach and most importantly, proximity to pedestrian retail activity. And that is the farthest eastern edge where the city, old City Hall property is, is really pushing the eastern boundary of where people will walk to shop and congregate and, you know, involved in commerce. So it does have an impact on value. That being said, the lot right next door to the old City Hall sold for two hundred thousand. And there is, there, there will be some work to mitigate a power pole situation there. So the net cost of that lot, which is half as large as the City Hall property, might be more like two fifty. So using that as a comparable, and I believe that was February of this year, using that as a comparable, eight hundred is very high. On the other hand, recently, the two houses, the little blue house and there's a little brown house behind it that are across from the winery. That's also a ten thousand square foot lot closer to the beach, very much in the thick of the pedestrian zone. And it closed less than a month ago for nine fifty. So I'm not, I wouldn't want to say that eight hundred is.
Coming up with the rumor that it's gonna become a brewery.
I don't think they know a hundred percent yet. What's, what's gonna happen there? Um, so eight hundred is, is, uh, it, it's possible. You'll notice in that appraisal, there's a lot of comment made to, you know, thorough marketing and market time and exposure. And I fully agree with that. I think that whatever the path is that we take for marketing, for selling that property, that's one thing I'd want to learn more about the bid process. That's the way we went, is that there is enough time for the commercial market, which is very narrow. It's a very narrow group of people that are interested in spending commercial money in Manzanita. I want to make sure that that audience knows about the property and has a lot of time to think about it. And a lot of these folks do a lot of their due diligence before making an offer. Because they like to move, you know, aggressively and firmly once they do. So I, I, I would hope that we don't surprise the market with this and that something happens and a lot of people are going, you know, what happened? I never knew that this was a possibility. So eight hundred is a bit on the high side of my mind, but things are changing rapidly and there is more commercial property demand right now than I've seen in the last twenty-five years.
Anybody else get questions or comments?
So, so, so Leila, you're, when, when you say that the appraiser assumed the vacant, the land would be vacant, does that, I, I assume that means the appraised price would be reduced by the demolition costs?
That's right.
And what was that? Do we know what that would be about?
Um, I think there was a study that was done on the City Hall for remediating the mold, which I think is far more expensive than what a tear down would require. And I think we were ballpark estimating probably a, a premium of about fifty thousand dollars. So the, the number is eight fifty. That's what the appraisal came out. So I, I guess in my mind, I was thinking eight hundred is, is, is a reasonable ask, given the expected remediation. Because there's asbestos, I think, in those tiles and so forth and that need to be addressed.
Yeah.
So, go ahead, Jerry. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just, I mean, as, as already been said, I think that even at eight hundred thousand, that, that's a significantly higher figure than any number that had been sort of tossed around. We've had a couple of conversations about this over the course of the last several months and I don't think I recalled hearing a number north of five hundred thousand. So, so it does create, you know, a dilemma because we either have a arguably less than optimal appraisal, or we're gonna be in a situation where we're gonna have to, I would think, hold out for a pretty good price on that property, which, you know, probably makes, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know the business way Hans is, but it seems like you'd want to be pretty patient and prudent and not rush into something on the low end if you have a property that arguably is worth eight hundred thousand bucks. So anyway, I, I'm curious to hear about the, the two different options that we have in front of us. And then I guess the other question, maybe this is for Hans, the, I was surprised to hear the, the price for the, the, the one property that the brewery might end up in. But then that lot across the street next to a wine bar, that seems to, that seems to be on the market for an awful long time.
Yeah, it's well over, well over a year.
So usually, you know, when you're, when you're not in a business, like I'm not in a business, properties on the market for that long, it makes you think that it's overpriced.
Yeah, it is. I've, I've written, I've written an offer, not for myself, but I've written an offer for a client on that property. They were very firm in, in not wanting to negotiate much. It's not exactly five thousand square feet. It's a little bit smaller than that, I think, because of the ADA parking space that benefits the winery property. And there is also an easement in the back. There's an access easement to access the winery building property. So it's, um, it's a postage stamp is an exaggeration, but it, it's a tight fit to put anything on there. There are a little bit, you know, there's some different visibility issues on a corner lot. Can't come quite as far forward with the, with a building there to allow sightlines at the intersection. So, somebody will, will probably figure out what to do there, but it, it's tricky to make a project work on a fifty by a hundred lot, just the economies of scale. So that they're really asking a premium for that. It's, it's almost, it, it would, it would almost be worth that, twice that if it was twice as big. Because it would just be easier to make a project that, that could pencil out and make sense.
Do we know what is gonna become of the lot, just the west of the old City Hall? I know it's been sold, but do we know?
Yeah, they've made it, it went through planning commission meeting and it'll be a live over work building with a single commercial space downstairs and a single family residence upstairs. So very similar to, to my home.
Right. Mayor, I had a couple quick questions and I've thrown them out more as questions for people like Hans than anything. But I do remember at one time in my life, I had some commercial property and ended up selling that property. But I discovered that there's firms, I guess in Portland more than anything, that specialize and that all they do is sell commercial property, basically. Is, is that something we would explore in terms of having someone market the property from a commercial perspective? Uh, and I, the, the, it seems like, you know, they know the business, they know the commercial market and they've got pocket listings and things that, and pocket people that they would maybe turn to focus on a commercial piece of property. The, the other issue is I'm not, for me, I'm not as so quick to say that those buildings aren't, couldn't produce some value to somebody. And so I wouldn't want us to be too quick to make a decision about demolition of those buildings until we have a better assessment as to whether they actually would be marketable. A fifty thousand dollar investment in a existing building, if that's what it would cost for the mold, I kind of questioned that myself. But, and then the, I guess the final point that, that that I would make about it is, and I'm losing my mind here. I'll move on because I've lost the thought I had. But I, I just want to be careful about removing the property that's there. And I also would like to see if we're gonna do this, that we market it as a commercial piece of property through a commercial company. Not to take away from the local residential realtors, but there is a difference in the two approaches that they take to marketing property.
Yeah, there is. And I'll just jump in really quickly, which is first that we're not, we're not demoing the building or doing anything of that nature. The assumption was and the way that we had the appraisal done was to understand highest and best use. And so that's why we did it this way, because then that gives us a really good sense of what the maximum price is that we could get for that property. So I hear what you're saying and understand that. The other thing I would say is that in, whether or not we elect to take a bid process, so a sealed bid process or just have a traditional broker, is that we would definitely want a commercial broker, commercially licensed broker that could assist us. And I would assume, and Hans would appreciate any thoughts you have on this too, is that what's typical is a, as a broker, when you hire them to sell a property, they do a broker opinion of value. So they'll look at our appraisal and then they will give us their opinion of the value. And then that could be our starting point for discussing what the setting the price could be. There are, and, and Hans could probably weigh in on this too, there are advantages and disadvantages to doing traditional versus a bid. So a bid is actually a lot more work for staff because we end up being the folks that are actually reviewing the bids, going through the whole process. You know, I certainly would and I've done a similar transaction where we actually sold a property to fund our City Hall in Milwaukee and we did a sealed bid process. And it wasn't, wasn't a huge lift, but it took some time and we did hire a commercial broker to help facilitate that transaction. And I've already sought out a scope of work for someone to do that type of work for us. I do think it limits the amount of exposure. But the, the other option is, is that you just turn it over to a commercial broker and then they get paid via their commission. And so then they handle everything. They handle all of it. And so, so that's attractive as well. And I think in a sealed bid, you have a, a, a price that has to be met. You set a minimum price, basically. And then in a commercial, traditional broker model, it's more market competitive. So you don't have that same kind of limitation. But in either case, this requires subject matter expertise and I would insist that we have a broker facilitate the transaction whether it's a bid or whether it's a traditional model.
And that was actually the point that I did forget. You, you were perfect in articulating it is if we were to go out, even if we get more than one commercial broker to provide an assessment of how they would market the property, what they think the property is worth, would be valuable to us. Uh, so I would encourage us, if we go that route, rather than the sealed bid process that we engage more than one company to do that. And I don't, are there, are there commercial brokers on the coast, Hans?
There are a couple that, that primarily do commercial. So yes, and I, I could help with that, with referring to somebody that's, that gets the coast and has, you know, I, I know folks that do probably more than half of their work is, is commercial. And certainly getting an estimate of value and getting their, their kind of take on how they would market and all of that. That's all free. As Leila was saying, the beauty of, of having a commission broker is they don't get paid unless they're successful. And that's something that I would also want to learn more about if we went with a sealed bid route is how much are we potentially gonna pay and, and maybe not get there, maybe not get to the price that, that we're hoping for, but still have some, some relatively, you know, considerable costs involved. But I, I don't, I agree that we should probably focus on marketing the property with the buildings as is. Most people that are motivated to purchase are going to deal with demolition and issues like that on their own. There's, it's very rare that you would purchase commercial property and have it given to you in a pristine, ready to build on state. So, um, yeah, I, I don't, I don't think the city needs to consider undertaking demolition of the, of the old City Hall building.
You know, I, uh, being a small town, and this is the first piece of city property we've had to sell at Idaho in a period of time, I, I, I kind of leaned toward finding the right commercial broker that could walk us through us and get the deal done. And, you know, you know, Hans, sometimes you gotta put in a lot of work to get a deal done.
Yeah, um, there have been three, there have been three commercial transactions recently and I've been part of, of all three of them on both sides, one of them. So I, I, I'm very, the thing that I'm most concerned about is I know how subtle some of these things are. I know how many months they can take to evolve. And for people to get confidence and do all the research involved, both in the property value, but in their ultimate desired. This is a really difficult market to develop property and make any kind of real investment return on. That's why there's so comparatively little commercial development here is the land is very expensive, much more expensive now than I've ever experienced. And the cost of constructions are, are high and potential lease rates are low. So, um, in the metro area, it's, I think, a different prospect when somebody's looking to acquire commercial property and do a project. It's, it's a, a little more complicated here. You know, in terms of finding somebody who's ready to stick their neck out and take that, take that chance.
So just, just out of curiosity, just out of curiosity, Hans, what is the commission on commercial real estate?
Well, it's usually negotiable. So they might come in and try to ask for six and use the rationale that that it's a lot of work and that it is harder to sell than residential, which is all true. But I, I think that given the low inventory relatively, I, I, I think that five percent would, I'd, I'd be arguing in not paying more than a five percent. And then they split that with the, with the buyer's agent on the other side of the transaction. So that, that I think that's another requirement that we could make is that there's a minimum amount offered to the buyer's agent and a gross amount to the, to the listing agent of, I, I'm sure there is a competent broker out there that would take on the listing for five percent.
Okay.
Can I ask one other question, Hans? And I don't know how even to approach a question, but given the difficulty we have on the coast with what you just described, I, I'm thinking about if we engage in a commercial broker, I know sometimes you, especially municipal jurisdictions, might be focused on what kind of development or project that they would like to see on a specific lot. And it seems to me that's something maybe that we should be thinking about here, not just from a planning commission standpoint, meeting all the planning and zoning requirements, but rather giving some thought to what do we want to see there? And because we have basically control on who we sell it to and how it's developed and the price we get, I just think that's something at least we should be in the background be thinking going forward. I don't know how you feel about that, but.
No, I think it's a great idea. It'll, you know, we were talking about a very narrow market and, and from a real estate perspective, you're always thinking about how, how much am I cutting down the slice of that pie and how much smaller is my market getting with different aspects of a property? But we're not desperate to sell and it is a central piece of property and it is right in the heart of the commercial zone. I think it is gonna be in the heart of what the commercial zone will be twenty years from now. So having some longer range vision, even if it maybe reduces the ultimate sales price a bit and makes it take longer to sell. I think, you know, twenty years from now, somebody may look back and go, wow, that was, that was a good idea.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but something like that would require some sort of arrangement or deed restriction or something in order to actually make it stick.
Yeah, deed restriction.
Which would, like Hans is saying, have a, likely have some sort of. Which would, like Hans is saying, have a, likely have some sort of impact on the residual value. So we would just need to, if we're limiting what can be done, we have to take that into account when it comes to the price. I totally like the, what you're thinking about, Counselor Nuttall. It's just, we just need to keep in mind that there'd be, there would need to be some sort of legal instrument that made that a requirement.
Yeah, it's a interesting um, conundrum in some respects is, on the one hand, is our role to kind of help develop the community as we all want the community to develop? Or is our role to see how much money we can get out of a piece of property? I would argue for the former. Uh, but I understand the comments that you're making, certainly.
And it's totally doable. I mean, I've spent a good part of my career doing exactly that, which is trying to get um, public benefit out of city or, you know, uh, locally owned property. And so you oftentimes have to set those expectations upfront and so that the buyers understand that. Um, that's typically been done through an RFP process and then there's typically a disposition and development agreement that goes along with that and, and so forth. Um, I don't know, if we took that kind of route here, that's a very different approach and um, open to hearing what the council has to say about that. But that becomes more of a joint development process, which is different than just a, a disposition that's um, intending to help fund another um, project. I think you can find something somewhere in the middle. Um, we would just need to acknowledge that there would be costs that would probably come out of that sales price in order to help facilitate, for example, um, a deed restriction, if that's indeed the uh, um, instrument we would use to ensure that whatever gets developed is consistent with the goals that we set for that property. So I'm sure there's some balance um, in there. Um, but once you start to layer those things on, it certainly does affect, I think, um, and Hans would know better than I, but I think it does certainly affect who is interested um, in the property. This is all really good um, discussion.
So, so what's our next step, Leila, in this process to move forward and get this building on the market?
Yeah, so I am, um, so I think the next step really is to have um, I think a conversation about this and, and move towards some decisions. So have council um, eh, make a determination as to whether or not we do a bid versus a um, like, we kind of have three options now, which is sort of a bid sale, a traditional broker sale, or this something kind of in between. Um, and so getting some clear direction from council on that, um, would then empower me to then go out and get the, um, get folks um, geared up uh, to start moving forward. Um, the other next step we would need to take, I think, although we're not required to do this, I do think it's good practice, which is to have a public hearing and declare the property surplus to our needs. Um, it's like what we're doing it tonight with some um, equipment that we own. Uh, we have to declare it surplus before we can sell it. Um, so I, I do think that's a good step for us to take. It allows us an opportunity to have the discussion in this public forum and allows folks to provide testimony on that. Um, so I think those, those actions could probably happen at the same time and council could give me direction on the type of sale and um, and declaring that property surplus. Um, I'm still working through the, the state historic preservation office um, effort. I've been on a manhunt for files. Um, and I think I have everything I need at this point finally, so that's really close. And that'll take about thirty to forty-five days to get um, a determination from the state. So we're, we're making progress, but I do think that that, that's really the next step, is direction on how, what is the disposition type and um, declaring the property surplus.
Should we uh, and do a public hearing and associated with that declarations? Should that be a separate meeting or should it just be a public hearing and a line item on our council meeting?
Um, I would just have it to be a line item on your council meeting.
Okay, is it possible to do that next month then?
I believe so, yeah.
How's everybody sound about that, that we, uh, we do that first?
I, I guess maybe explain to me exactly what would be, what we would accomplish and what the long-term result would be of doing that, Leila.
Of having the public hearing?
I mean, is that basically, we're gonna be on the market then?
No, it's basically what you're doing is um, you're sort of declaring to the public.
Surplus, right.
Yeah, we don't need this anymore. And so that's really all it's doing is just sort of, and you, we would pass a resolution. That would be my recommendation. And then that, that really sets us up then to move forward with that transaction.
So we could take the time necessary to decide all these issues that we just described over the winter, basically?
Yes, and yes, and we would, you know, I would come back to you once we have the broker and when, before we put it up to market and so forth. But I feel like having the, the public hearing and declaring it surplus is um, the most transparent way to do it. And it just allows us to have a conversation around um, the use of that property.
Thanks, thank you.
Well, that sounds, sounds like the next step, so we'll try to line that up for November then. So these are some great discussions today. We have uh, another fun uh, item on the agenda tonight. It is a movie company coming down here, which is my absolute favorite. I've been burned so many times with movie projects that uh, it's uh, uh, well, Leila will tell you, she had another company come down and wanted to rent the Underhill Plaza. We threw them the uh, five thousand dollar a day deal that we got on the last one and they walked and they didn't want to pay it. But now we got somebody that wants to drive down Lanita and fly a helicopter and take pictures and everything and I, I don't know, and I'm not gonna, you guys make up your mind when you hear what they have to say tonight. I, I, but I just feel the last few events we've had, I feel pretty burned and being told things that didn't take place. And even the last, the hu- hu- one that we had uh, where they filmed in a house and they were filming at night with bright lights and I'm getting phone calls on my private line at home at eleven o'clock at night after I'm in bed and I'm going, you know, do we really need this stuff? I mean, we don't need any more notoriety and we don't need the money. Uh, but the, these companies, there's so much filming that goes on in Oregon, particularly around Portland. I think they just feel entitled. But anyway, I'm just, I'm just blowing off steam here. We'll talk about.
Can I, can I ask Leila on this uh, proposal? It seemed to me that it was a one-time drive down Lanita in a caravan. It wasn't like repeated trips over and over and over again. Is this what I'm understanding to be?
Yeah, I think so. I think it's two. Um, and I don't believe they're stopping. Um, and yeah, so my understanding is it's just gonna be two loops and that's it.
And they're using, and there's a lot of time spent on state highways and county roads that don't involve us at all as part of this process, right?
That's correct, yeah. They'll be on highway one oh one. I think the loop is, it's in the packet. We'll look at it tonight. The highway one oh one, Lanita Ocean, and then back out Manzanita, and I think they do it twice.
I guess one of the questions I had as I read it is, if they're just driving down to Lanita, do they even require a special events permit? But maybe because it's a caravan, I, I don't know. It just seems like it's pretty, it's pretty much non-event to me, but maybe others have a different view. I was out of town at the time you had the real bad problem, so I'm not a good.
The last Lanita movie?
I, I, see, if my wisdom was to be out of town. So I, I'm not a good person to run this by because uh, I know you had problems that day or a couple of days.
Well, they're not asking, as I understand it, any police services or any city services are not paying us anything or nothing, right?
Well, they did, they did request if they could have a police escort and I checked with the chief and um, we just don't know, um, not at this time, but, so I think they'll just proceed without it. I think they were hoping to just to have that as a little extra. I did check with Chief Harris about this and I shared the map and their proposal with him and he didn't have any um, concerns, primarily because they're not stopping anywhere. I think if there was stopping and impacts that, you know, and um, Roger, I think he was the person that submitted the um, request will be here tonight, and so you can certainly ask him any questions that you have, but the chief didn't have any concerns because they weren't stopping. I mean, hopefully they'll stop at the stop signs, but they're not gonna be stopping to like hang out or something.
And, and that's a question though, I think we should be asking, because, because when you mentioned police escort, that's the first thing I thought of, was they're wanting to blow through the stop signs and make it just a continuous uh, route. And so we should clarify that tonight. Um, because that's probably not what we'd want to have happen without at least some flaggers or something.
That's right. Yeah, and then this time we didn't actually draft the permit itself. Um, we thought we would wait until after we got direction from council, just because this one's a little bit different than our normal, you know, site-based permits. Um, so we wanted to make sure that we got all the conditions in the permit that were required, if you do indeed um, intend to approve it.
Well, the goal is they're just gonna flash through town and be gone.
That's my understanding.
Okay. My faith in that happening seamlessly is, is limited, to be honest. It, it usually turns out to be a little bit more difficult than that. But anyway, um, anybody have anything else that will adjourn for dinner? And we'll be on at six tonight, so.
Yeah, don't forget.
That'll be exciting. So you've just got time to have dinner and get back on, back in the saddle here. So does anybody got anything else or will adjourn, I guess? Okay, we'll see.